Okay.
I'll go on.
We'll call the meeting to order at 6:30.
Thank you, yeah.
First item on our agenda would be, well, call the meeting to order. We have the El Dorado City Commission meeting for August 7th. First on our agenda would be the call to order. Roll call.
Mayor Haynes.
Present.
Commissioner Locke.
Present.
Commissioner Lewis.
Present.
Commissioner Badaway.
Mayor.
Commissioner Wilkinson. Yes.
Thank you. And the next item would be invocation.
We have our hearts in prayer this evening. Our gracious Father, we are thankful tonight that we can come to you and we can seek your wisdom and your guidance for this city council this evening. We realize there are many issues that are going to come before them. We ask you to guide them in each of them. We pray in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Thank you. Next would be pledge of allegiance. Would you rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving along, personal appearances. I think we have a couple of awards to give out to start out the evening. Is that correct? Do we have Kurt Zeeman? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, guests. This evening I'm here to present an El Dorado Police Department Life Saving Award to Officer John Thompson. Circumstances on the recommendation, on Tuesday, June 6th, at 12:41 hours, Sergeant John Thompson and Patrol Officer Drew Fortenberry were dispatched to 500 East Central, the bridge over the Walnut River here east of town. It was reported that a male subject was sitting on the ledge of the bridge and appeared as if the subject was contemplating suicide. Sergeant Thompson and Officer Fortenberry arrived and parked away from the subject and calmly approached him on foot. The subject was sitting on the bridge, on the ledge of the bridge, straddling a guardrail. The subject did not react negatively to the officers as they approached. Sergeant Thompson engaged the subject in conversation and learned he was indeed contemplating suicide. Sergeant Thompson and Officer Fortenberry learned that the man was willing to seek treatment. They were able to calmly assist the man off the bridge railing without incident. And Sergeant Thompson then transported the man to the South Central Mental Health where he was receiving crisis treatment. Without Sergeant Thompson and Officer Fortenberry's prompt and alert action, this man's life may have well been lost. Sergeant Thompson and Officer Fortenberry used their calm demeanor and tuned-in situational awareness to read the man's actions and respond appropriately. They were able to safely resolve this situation quickly and effectively without injury or loss of life. This was submitted by Lieutenant Travis Pierce, who was a supervisor on duty that day. It went before our awards board and the board recommended that both officers receive the Life Saving Medal. So Sergeant John Thompson would come up. I'd like to present you with the El Dorado Police Department Life Saving Medal. And there's your plaque to put on your wall. Incidentally, that award was also given to Officer Drew Fortenberry. Drew left us about a month ago to move to North Carolina, so we were able to give him his award before he moved. So, thanks a lot.
Thank you. Great work. Thank you very much. Kurt Bookout.
Good evening, Commission. Tonight, we're here to recognize Jason Patty and Pat Fountain. Jason is Superintendent of Wastewater Treatment for El Dorado and Pat Fountain is one of our Operator Force. Here to recognize them for a National Innovation Award. Each year at our annual conference, Water and Wastewater Conference, the Kansas Water Environment Association has a contest and they recognize innovation. And what I mean by that is inventions in the facilities. Operators are constantly trying to do things better, more efficiently, come up with innovations that maybe the engineers didn't think of when they built the facility. And so, we've been doing this contest for about 10 years and every year they place in the top three and many years they've placed first for their inventions. And so this last year, one particular invention that was different in that it is an invention that was designed to help the process, whereas it's not just a better wrench or a better type of tool. This was actually a place to, it was an invention to tap a process called the return-activated sludge. Before I get any deeper into this, it helped the process out. And when we talked to the, when they notified us of the award, one of the things they were really impressed with is that it actually addressed a problem that a lot of facilities have in being able to pull samples on the return-activated sludge where engineers don't typically do this. And so, they came up with this innovation, won first place in the national, at the national level for the Water Environment Federation. And with that, the Water Environment Federation offered to pay their national conference registrations and have them present at the national conference. But due to budget cuts, we're not able to send them. But did want to recognize them here at this commission meeting for their innovation. And this is really, if you think about the reason that El Dorado's facility wins the best in the state every year, it's because of these types of things that these guys are always thinking about. They're always trying to be more efficient and run more efficiently. So, want to recognize Jason Patty and Pat Fountain for their national award.
Thank you. Okay. Next thing, next item on our agenda would be public comment. Anybody in the audience wish to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll move on to consent agenda. Consent agenda has got three items in it. Everybody's had a chance to look at that as it was sent out earlier. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? If none, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move the consent agenda as presented be approved.
I'll second that. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Not having any old business, we'll move to new business, which is, item 13 on your agenda is the creation of the Red Coach Inn Community Improvement District. Anybody here wishing to speak to that? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kim Bell, Kim Bell, City's Board Council. On July 5th, the governing body approved a resolution to call a public hearing on the creation of a community improvement district for the Red Coach Inn. That resolution was published twice and property owners should be notified. And the hearing is called for tonight. So your action tonight is to hold a public hearing on the creation of the CID. And after the public hearing is concluded, you can consider an ordinance which will actually create the community improvement district. It is for the benefit of the Red Coach Inn and that is the only property owner that is within the district. The hotel will charge an additional 2% sales tax and that sales tax will come back to the city and then the city will use that to reimburse the developer for the cost of the acquisition and improvements to the hotel. The estimated cost of the acquisition and improvements are $1,110,000. So the CID will be in place for as long as it takes to reimburse those costs or 22 years, whichever comes first. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them. The developer's also here if you have any questions about the project itself.
Okay, any questions? I think we've been talking about it.
The only thing I had, this doesn't include the lot that's next to Sunny Stop that used to be with the hotel.
No, it's just the hotel.
Just the hotel.
And restaurant. Right.
For the questions, comments? Thank you, Kim. Thank you. Can I entertain a motion? A public hearing? That's not what...
The judge does not state that there's a public hearing, but they're...
Okay, here he is.
The courtship does.
So we will hold a public hearing tonight and approve the ordinance tonight. It's not a...
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Well, at this time, we'll open a public hearing. Anybody from the public wish to speak to this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and move on to consideration of the adoption of the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I move that ordinance number G1258 and ordinance authorizing the creation of the Red Coach Inn Community Improvement District in the city of El Dorado, Kansas, authorizing the reimbursement of certain economic development project costs incurred within said district, authorizing the imposition of a community improvement sales tax to be collected within said district, and authorizing execution of a development agreement relating to said district.
I'll second it. It's been moved and seconded. Any further comment? Seeing none, we'll have roll call.
Let's see, Mayor Fins?
Yes.
Chase?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke? Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badaway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Abbott does not hear and disfalls court.
He's doing great.
Motion carries five to zero. So, thank you and we look forward to your improvements. Next item on our agenda is public hearing for the issuance of revenue bonds for BG Products. At this point, I'd say a conflict of interest, so I'll step aside, hand this meeting over to Chase and I will exit the room until that item's done. So, thanks.
Thanks. Can you give us the background? Mr. Billner?
Do we have someone here? Kim, Kim again.
BG Products has requested an industrial revenue bond to finance their expansion here in El Dorado. This will be the second industrial revenue bond issued that we, that the city will have done for BG Products. The first, those bonds have all been issued. They are requesting bonds in an amount not to exceed $24,220,000. They are also requesting a 10-year, 100% property tax abatement and a sales tax exemption on materials and equipment that go into the new facility. We have published a notice of this public hearing and provided written notice to the county and the school district, so they are aware of this and had an opportunity to come if they had any concerns. After the public hearing, we also had a cost-benefit analysis performed, which you should have received copies of in your packet. After the public hearing, the governing body can consider a resolution of intent to issue the bonds. This doesn't actually issue the bonds. It merely sets forth your intent to go forward with the bond issue and it is subject to a number of conditions, including satisfactory negotiation of all of the necessary bond documents and agreement by BG Products that they'll pay all of the city's costs and expenses that are involved in issuing the bonds, which would include bond counsel fees, city attorney fees. We have to obtain all necessary government approvals. And one that we have added that is particular to this deal is a satisfactory negotiation and execution of a real estate purchase agreement for the property that will be subject to the bond issue. I'm not terribly familiar with the real estate purchase agreement, but I know the city attorney has been working on that. So if you have any questions, I'm sure she'd be happy to address those. Once the resolution of intent is approved, we can apply for a sales tax exemption certificate and they can begin their project. Typically, we don't come in and issue the bonds until the project is close to completion. The reason being that the property tax abatement begins the calendar year after the year we issue the bonds. So, we want to issue the bonds when the project is nearing completion, so the abatement will begin when the project is at its full value. There are representatives of BG Products here. If you have any questions about the project itself.
I have a question for you, Kim. Is the 10-year tax abatement, is that on just the expansion or is that on the entire...
This will just be on the new expansion that we finance with these bonds. That will be this 10 years. The previous bond issue that dealt with the initial construction here in El Dorado, that abatement period has started and is running. So this will be separate. It'll be a separate 10-year period.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions at this point? Well, I would say just thank you to BG for continuing to invest in our community and expand. You've been a great addition. We enjoy seeing that relationship grow. So, if you guys have any questions at this point, we'll open the public hearing for BG Products IRB. If anyone wants, wishes to come up and address the commission, do so now. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Does anyone have any questions?
No.
Then I would entertain a motion.
I move that Resolution Number 2846, a resolution determining the advisability of issuing taxable revenue bonds for the purpose of financing the acquisition, construction, renovation, and equipping of a manufacturing and distribution facility located in said city and authorizing the execution of related documents.
I will second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Turn the corner and like, it's not there. Failed.
Okay, thank you. Item 15 on our agenda would be the resolution to apply for CDBG housing grant. Does somebody in the audience or staff wish to have some background on that?
That does also require a public hearing beforehand.
Right.
And the project to be discussed during this public hearing would be minor to substantial housing rehabilitation for approximately 11 houses occupied by qualifying low to moderate income families, approximately five of which will be rental units and six will be owner-occupied, along with no more than three residential demolitions. Rehabilitation is going to be limited to a targeted area founded by West Third Avenue to the north, Gordy Street to the east, Emporia Street to the west, and Central Avenue to the south. The total project cost is at $358,100 with a grant request of $300,000, the rest being local match. And that's for submission to the Kansas Department of Commerce for a CDBG housing grant.
Okay.
Questions? It's the same one we did last year with a different target area.
And this one we've been talking about. Any other questions or comments from the commission at this point? Okay. Our next step would be to open up for public hearing. At this point, open up for public hearing on the CDBG grant for this district. Anybody from the audience wish to speak to the commission? And then we'll close the public hearing and move on to resolution. This resolution authorizes the agreement and the proceeding with the grant. So... You ready? I'm ready.
I move the Resolution Number 2847, a resolution certifying legal authority to apply for the 2018 Kansas Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program from the Kansas Department of Commerce and authorizing the mayor to sign and submit such an application.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further comment or discussion? This is not a roll call. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. We'll make an effort for some grant funding. Thank you, everybody, for your efforts.
We are still collecting pre-abs on that, but I will provide the final document if you guys are able to support it.
Okay. This is some of the signature pages here. I think I'll get it to David and David can get it back to London or wherever we want to do that. Thank you. Next item on our agenda would be the standard traffic ordinance and uniform public offense code. I think this is something, again, we talked about at our last work session meeting. Is anybody... Mr. Zeeman?
Good evening again, Chief Zeeman. Once a year, we come before you and ask you to vote into ordinance the Uniform Standard Traffic Code and the Standard Traffic Ordinance. Reminder what those books are when we get them. They're compiled by the League of Kansas Municipalities. It's basically a condensed version of the most-used state statutes, criminal statutes for the UPOC and the traffic statutes for the STO. It's not an all-inclusive book, but like I said, it's the most common. The UPOC has the most common misdemeanor charges that you can charge in a municipal court. Same for the standard traffic ordinance. I've got a list of the changes. I'll start with Unified Public Offense Code. They added a definition of an animal shelter. In Section 3.1.1, they amended domestic battery to read in Section A1 knowingly or recklessly causing bodily harm to a person with whom the offender is involved or has been involved in a dating relationship or a family or household member. Previous version included only family or household member and added the meaning of a dating relationship. So, a few years ago, the dating relationship was built in to the law. They took it out and now they've added it back in. So... Section 3.8.1, violation of a protection order. They added sexual assault order to that in subsection, or in Section A6. Section 4.5, binding sexual relations. They changed the fine upon conviction from $2,500 to not less than $1,200 or no more than $2,500. Also changed how the collected fines are remitted to one-half of each fine collected. Pursuant to this subsection, shall be remitted to the Human Trafficking Victim Assistance Fund and the remainder shall be remitted as otherwise provided by law. 4.5.1, unlawful use of a communication facility is a new section. This section makes it unlawful for any person to knowingly or intentionally use any communication facility in committing, causing, or facilitating the commission of any misdemeanor under Section 4.5 or in any attempt to commit or any conspiracy to commit or any criminal solicitation of any misdemeanor under Section 4.5. As using this section, communication facility means any and all public and private instrumentalities used for useful in transmission of writing, signs, signals, pictures, or sounds of all kinds, includes telephone, wire, radio, computer, computer networks, beepers, pagers, and all other means of communications. Section 10.2, drawing a weapon upon another was deleted from the UPOC altogether. Section 10.2.7 is illegal operation of amusement ride. That's a new section. Makes it unlawful after July 1st of 2018 for an owner or operator of an amusement ride as defined in KSA 441601 and amendments thereto to knowingly operate or cause to be operated any amusement ride without a valid permit issued by the state of Kansas. Section 11.11, cruelty to animals, changed the wording in Section C. If a person is adjudicated guilty of the crime of cruelty to animals, such animal shall not be returned to or remain with such person. That was the changes in the UPOC. There were only two changes to STO. One had to do with lamps or other equipment on bicycles, Section 133. They amended Section A by adding the option three of the operator of such bicycle shall be wearing a device that emits a red or amber light that shall be visible from a distance of 500 feet to the rear. So before, there was only two options on a bicycle. You either had to have a red flashing light in the back or you had to have a red reflector that was visible up to 500 feet. Now they've given that option if the rider has a flashing light on their person. And Section 182.1, seat belts. The only change was in Section D, which raised the fine to $30 from $10, which we previously addressed in a previous commission meeting. And those are the changes. Any questions? Okeydokey. Thank you.
Any questions for the commission? Thank you. Chief Zeeman? Oh. Okay. Any other questions or comments from the commission?
I move that Ordinance Number G1259 and ordinance amending Section 10.04.010 of the El Dorado Municipal Code pertaining to traffic and referencing the standard traffic ordinance for Kansas City's Edition 2017 be passed and approved.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further comment or discussion? These are two different motions here, so we'll do roll call on notion one.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badaway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Haynes?
Yes. Motion two would be for the Uniform Public Offense Code. I entertain a motion.
I move that ordinance number G1260 and ordinance amending Section 9.04.010 of the El Dorado Municipal Code pertaining to traffic and referencing the Uniform Public Offense Code for Kansas City's Edition 2017 be passed and approved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further comment or discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badaway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Haynes?
Yes. Okay, thank you. That takes us to reports. That's all of our business for today's, tonight's meeting.
The Airport Advisory Committee met last Thursday over lunch. They have done some work around the original tea hanger, concreting the gravel areas for drainage, and there is still some more work they need to do, but they plan to do that this fall. They got a KDOT grant. They applied for it last year, didn't get it, so the city went ahead and did the work. We paid... We paved the road going in and the parking lot, and then after we had done that, we got notice that they throw you back in the hopper again, and we got picked for a thirty-six thousand dollar KDOT grant. So again, we're going to work on more drainage concerns, more of the parking area, and it'll be self-performed, except the asphalt will be done by local contractors. The fly-in is August nineteenth. The Young Eagles will be there to give rides if you're eight years old or seventeen. The Boy Scouts will serve breakfast, and the Civil Air Patrol will also be there with the booth to talk about what it is they do. Parks and Rec, we have not met, but we had vandalism at the pool on Sunday. I'm assuming Saturday night, which closed the pool on Sunday, closed the pool again today. Hopefully, they will be able to reopen it tomorrow. But again, I stress, anytime you vandalize anything, it's costing you the taxpayer. And so, with the pool shut down for two days and having to deal with the damage done, that does not come without a price tag. So again, if you have any idea who's causing this vandalism to the parks in El Dorado, call the police department, call the cities, or call Crime Stoppers. We need to get this brought under control.
Have we advertised that on Crime Stoppers?
Not this recent pool incident. But the others?
The, all the park? Have we had any?
Do you mind if we may have had a lead?
On the vandalism of the park?
Yes, Chief.
On the one back on that stadium, I think we have a lead that didn't get us too far, so still working on it.
Okay. Prairie Trails hasn't met since my last report, so I have nothing to report.
Okay.
I have nothing to report for Inc. We haven't met yet.
We're getting ready to get started again shortly with you, the commission. We just approved some new students who are going to be joining us. I'll just say real quickly, big thank you to our CVB, Molly Denton and Caitlin Fowler and...
Shelby.
Shelby. I'd always know it's an S. They worked pretty hard these past few weeks, and El Dorado successfully pulled off a handful of good events. But I'd also say thank you to Parks and Rec, pool staff, and Mayor Haynes did a great job the other night at the Good Morning Peyton Event. That was a wonderful community event. It reminded me why I chose to stay in El Dorado.
That news article actually appeared in the London Daily News.
Really?
Yes.
You subscribe to that?
This afternoon.
I would say, I want to know if we, if Mayor Haynes is in London, we need to get, we need to get something.
He will need someone to go with him.
And then our Public Works Department, I saw Brad out and about at a handful of events, and then of course, police and fire, they were out of the pool, and then I know a variety of the other events. And so, just a big thank you to everyone. I felt like Shrimble Weekend, Damn Music Fest Weekend went off as smoothly as possible considering how many folks were in town. And then again, Frontier Western, I know they kind of had a rough time with weather, but a lot of good volunteers who put a lot of work into that and make that happen. So anyways, just a big thank you to city staff and all the volunteers who made everyone feel welcome and pulled off a good couple of weeks in El Dorado.
Thank you. Yeah, that was a, the turn night into day event was pretty, pretty, pretty fun, and then lots going on, so I echo that. Kudos to CVB and staff and everybody in, everybody in town who got to pull that off. That was a pretty exciting and energetic couple of weeks here that we've been anticipating for a long time, and it worked out. Reports for me, I don't have anything necessarily for Inc. Library Ward hadn't met, Main Street is recovering from their, the Western Festival, so I don't have, my last meetings were just kind of anticipation of that. I will share, REEP is in the middle of strategic planning. I think they'll be reaching out to, to member cities. So David, I guess anticipate REEP getting ahold of you as we go through some strategic planning on what, what is their work planned for the next few, few years? And also, I'm, they have invited again, and I have accepted a spot to join them to the city-to-city, would the, as a REEP member representing El Dorado, join the Wichita Chambers City-to-City event this year? They're going to, we are going, I say they, we, now that I'm among them, are going to Ralla, North Carolina.
Ralla, yeah.
Yeah. So that'll be, that's coming up in September, so I will miss the September, the second September commission meeting because of that, but I'm looking forward to going. Last year, we went to Nashville and was able to do some great networking with our neighbors. So we'll do it again. It'll be fun. That's all I have for reports. I guess I would say for CVB, a couple of things. We'll let Molly and that group catch their breath, but I would like to say, I'd like to start the conversation as soon as possible. Community image is one of our, one of the strategic plans of the commission, and we have got quite a bit of publicity and a lot of good things. Is there a way that we can ride this wave and get community image started, restarted, whatever that is? So I'm anxious to hear what, what might be in store for that, so. Whether or not, David, you need some form of direction from the commission or not, but that's on our strategic plan. I'd like to start hearing more about that sooner rather than later.
I second that.
And what those partnerships could look like, what all that could look like.
Okay.
So, and you know, if there's any reports out of what just happened this in July, that'd be, that'd be great, too. I'm sure the commission and the public would like to hear what some of those results were.
Well, we'll probably do to report on the events, we'll probably wait a couple of months, and the reason for that, sales tax is delayed by two months, so if we want to get a full accounting of the impact, we need to wait for the sales tax figures, and also transit guest tax comes in quarterly, but we can probably get that information or get a good estimate of what that might look like.
Okay.
But sales tax, definitely we want to probably wait for that. So we'll schedule that for an upcoming study session, but we'll have a full overview of the events that take place in July.
Okay, good.
And I would add, if I may, while that information is important, I would encourage, though, you know, our CVB crew to go ahead and start thinking, I mean, we just showcased the community in a great way and showed a lot of people that we have the capacity to host bigger events, and I think getting that message out there right now for events for next year, I think probably don't want to wait too long. I mean, we still want to get the sales tax information and all those details on what had happened, but I think as far as what we're capable of doing, finding a creative way to market that and get that out there would be appropriate sooner than later, in my opinion.
Do we know anything about the Disc Golf grand opening?
We do, but I don't have enough time ahead, so I'll get the information, and I'll get it back to you.
Okay.
We had to move it because of the gentleman from Emporia, they had an event that was already scheduled, so they were concerned that some of the big disc golfers in the region would not be able to attend our event, so we were in discussions with rescheduling that to a date where there wasn't a conflicting Disc Golf event, so. But I don't have that. Kevin has that information, and he's out through Wednesday, so when he gets back, I'll, we'll get that out.
Okay, but it's not this weekend?
No.
Okay. Well, just so the paper knows to put it in. Okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. That's kind of all I had. On the notes of Disc Golf, though, I know signage isn't up yet, I mean, is it, do we have it up? When you, when you report back on the opening, you might let us know when it's really all going to be done, too.
Okay.
I get, I get some questions there, and I also, you might say, you kind of sent it to us in a report, but we might say out loud here what, what the status is of the compost. I get lots of questions there. People are anxious to get back into that facility.
That's a great segue, because it's the first thing on my list of things to report to you all this week. So you've all gotten a lot of questions, as we have as well, about the compost pile. As you know, it caught fire, and fireworks did everything they could to squelch the fire, and then for the last week, it's been, just trying to think of the right word. Anyway, they have been fighting that and getting that all prepared so that the site will be available for public use again, probably first part of next week, so that's kind of the goal. It may be open sooner than that, but that's what we're telling people, just so we can aim for a target that we can probably hit. So, we anticipate having a compost site ready for public use by the beginning of next week. As Commissioner Wilkinson indicated, we do apologize for closing the pool Sunday and again today, but as you are aware, someone dumped an unknown agent into the pool that resulted in the water changing colors. Initially, it was red, and it's since been diluted enough that now it's purple, and it's continuing to get weaker and weaker. The Public Works Department did test the water, there were no harmful chemicals found in it, so the Parks and Rec Department's going to go ahead and open it up tomorrow. Staff, including John Scanlon, Steve Ottman, and pool staff have been cleaning the pool and getting it prepared for opening, so we should definitely commend them for their efforts in this kind of interesting but problematic situation to pool. I don't know how much material you have to put into a pool to change the entire pool colors, but obviously, someone did, and so it's something that we're going to be looking into. Unfortunately, we don't have cameras at the pool, so we don't have a good insight into how they got in or what it was even. But it wasn't, it won't be harmful, so if there is still a tint in the water tomorrow, it's not harmful, and the public can swim and be, and it's still safe to the best of knowledge. The Parks and Rec Department is also accepting applications for participation in some youth activities, to include youth-like football, which the deadline for that is August twenty-fifth, soccer, which is August twenty-first, and volleyball, which is August twenty-fifth. In addition, staff is also seeking volunteers to coach these events, so if you're a parent and you have kids that will be playing these events, please consider volunteering to coach. It'll be a fun opportunity for you, and it'll be fun for your kids. If you're interested in any of these opportunities, call or visit Parks and Rec for more information. That number is three one three two one ninety-one hundred. This past week, we interviewed five top candidates for the fire chief position. The interview committee discussed the candidates, and we're now, well, we, I am now considering options for that position, and I'm anticipating a decision concerning the next fire chief by the end of the week, so you'll be hearing from me very soon regarding that. We're very grateful for all those who expressed interest in the position, and again, we'll be making an announcement hopefully here pretty quick. The public work, I'm sorry, the Public Utilities Department began its treatment of free chlorine to maintain residuals throughout the water system, so water customers may smell or taste water, I'm sorry, may taste or smell chlorine during the next four weeks or so as that treatment moves through the system. The city must occasionally do this when we aren't able to meet chlorine residual requirements, and so we pump free chlorine throughout the system. It's not harmful, but again, it does leave a chlorine taste and odor, so that that is something that we have to deal with temporarily. And then finally, the Parks Master Plan Task Force met last week to discuss strategies for making forward the top priority of the committee. That was presently discussed as an aquatic center to be constructed in North Main Park, or that's the proposal at this point in time. The city's pool consultant presented two conceptual options to the task force. One option included a twenty-five meter pool, and option two featured a fifty-meter pool. Both pools, both pool options could feature a variety of pool amenities based on public input, such as a laser river, climbing wall, several options for slides, zero-depth entry, party rental area, and a heated pool. A survey would be developed and distributed so the public could provide feedback on amenities to be considered in the final design. The consultant's working on a website for the survey, and once that's all completed, we'll make that website known to the public, as well as making the website, I'm sorry, not the website, but the survey available in hard copy, so folks can come by City Hall or a couple of other locations, pick up a copy and fill out a copy for inclusion in the, in the results. Following input from the public, a task force will work with a consultant to prepare a final design for the pool and cost estimates to help prepare a potential sales tax question for voters to consider in the spring. Also, I have just received note that the compost pile is now open at a schedule. So as of tomorrow, you can take your stuff by the compost pile and drop off at the pool and cool off after a hard day's work. That's really all I got for now. If you have any questions, I'll stand for those.
Good, thank you. Any other questions? David? Any other business for the, for the, for the commission? None, I would consider a motion to adjourn.
We adjourn. Second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? We are adjourned. Thank you.